Hey, everyone, and welcome. At this time, I would like to call to order the Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five School Board Workshop. And as we always do, I'd like to hand it over to Vice Chair Seager.
Well, thank you. It's not an overly long, but it's not a short agenda today. So, Mr. Lieber, would you like to join us today?
Sure. Thank you.
This is an update from the Vogel Group, so.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Andrew Liebert. I work for the Vogel Group in Tallahassee and have the privilege of representing you all and advocating for resources during session in Tallahassee. And just want to start off by saying that's a pleasure and I appreciate the trust that you put in us. You know, I'm here today, but there's a team of four of us that fight for you guys year round and try to deliver and maximize results for you guys. And it's been a pleasure to work with Mark and his team and the board. You guys have been collaborative, respectful, responsive, and it's just been, it's been a great couple of years. It's hard to believe it's been, you know, going into our third session. So, you know, just to recap sort of where we've come from, we've had a good couple of years. So, we've had the one point five million in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year for the airplane hangar project that Senator Oliverton and Representative Grant were very helpful with. Then we had the advanced manufacturing facility project last year, which was one point seven five million. So, over the last couple of years, we've been able to bring home a little over three and a quarter million dollars to the school district, which is really impressive, given the fact that there's been a budget cut environment the last couple of years. So, I ran some quick numbers on the projects that have been funded. And, you know, members won't usually file a project unless they're passionate about it. So, there's a lot of energy going into all these projects all over the state, and every year, eighty percent of them don't make it to the finish line. So, the fact that two years in a row, we've been able to get there speaks to the team that exists, and that's a combination of you guys, a fantastic delegation that we have that's been willing to lean in, spend political capital, and make those projects a priority, and then us running around the Capitol during the chaos, making sure those projects remain top of mind for legislators and staff. So, it's been a successful couple of years, and I think, you know, I'm proud of that, and I think, I think y'all should be as well. Looking at last session, it was a pretty chaotic session in Tallahassee. There was, it was, it became very complicated very quickly. You know, we started off with a special session that was called by the governor, and the legislature doesn't typically like being told what to do. So, that became sort of a source of friction very early. And we got through that, and things started to feel pretty normal for a little while. But then, there were some big ideas that were rolled out in the middle of session that were going to cause some really dramatic changes to the budget. Speaker was advocating for a dramatic sales tax cut, and what happened was that became something that they were really dug in on and wouldn't move on. And the Senate's position was, well, maybe we can afford that this year, but our budget outlook is showing decreased revenues in out years, and we think we're going to end up having to cut critical services if we, if we make that cut. So, they got stuck there, and they couldn't come to an agreement. So, a lot of policies started to kind of fall by the wayside, and that created more and more complicated situations. So, as you guys know, they didn't get a budget done during session. So, they adjourned, and then we had to come back and do a budget in the beginning of June. And we were able to get your all's project in the budget, which we're very happy about. And then, at our firm, we implement a robust veto protection strategy to make sure the governor's office is, is aware of the importance of the project to the region. And the fact that you guys have been able to show success with previous projects and show skin in the game makes it much easier for us to storytell and make sure they understand the value that you guys are bringing to the region. So, looking forward to next session, it is an early session. We have committee week starting next month, so it's going to be kicking off fast and furious. And we're working with Mark and the staff to get forms and proper posture. And if you guys have any questions on any of that moving forward, you know, I'm happy to answer that. But I, I would, I would just say, session starting in the beginning of the year, I don't expect the dynamics to get any less complicated. There's still a lot of animosity and hurt feelings from last session, and I think you're going to have even bigger fiscal and structural budget issues at play. You know, there's a lot of talk about property taxes right now, the different approaches on how, on how that's going to be discussed. You know, the governor wants to put it on the ballot. Speaker's been workshopping issues all summer. The Senate's sort of been waiting patiently and listening. So, to see how that starts to take shape and what the impacts are going to be on, on local governments and the ripple effects throughout the state's going to dictate a lot of how we're going to spend, you know, energy communicating with you guys and advocating on your behalf to make sure you guys are still in a strong position in addition to the projects that we're looking for, looking for this year. We, we have, we have a pretty good problem in the sense that our local delegation is so excited about being helpful that we've, we've decided, you all have decided to, to move forward with two requests this year. So, one for each House member to carry, and then, and then the Senator, Senator Oliverton will carry or, or delegate those projects to, to someone else. But I think we're in, we're in great shape. The welding facility that's being discussed, there's clearly a need for that in the region. The water management program that's being discussed, there's a huge need for that. I have the, the pleasure at our firm of working with a lot of different utilities, and when I started to bring this up with them, they were, they leapt out of their chairs. They were thrilled because there's not already only a huge need for that. A couple of years ago, they passed Senate Bill sixty-four, which completely changes how water treatment plants have to operate. They have to use their water for a beneficial purpose, no more just releasing it. So, they have to clean it to a drinking water standard, use it for irrigation, or, or inject, deep well inject the, the water. So, there's a huge need for both of those programs, and I think the legislature is going to view them favorably. I'm happy to take any questions, but I think that's where we stand. I think we're looking good going into session, and.
Oh, I got some boxing gloves for the three powers.
Yeah. I've always got brass gloves.
Rumor has it it's going to be extra rough this year, whether that's accurate or not.
Yeah, I mean, there, it's always, it's always a zero-sum game, right? A dollar for you guys is a dollar someone else doesn't get. So, I mean, whether, whether they're fighting about big issues for not, or not, it always ends up being a challenge, but I'm really proud of our delegation. We have fantastic legislators. I mean, two, you know, two freshman House members that have done a great job, you know, positioning themselves in Representative Nix and Representative Oliver. And then it never hurts to have a Senate president representing you. So, I mean, that's always a good backstop that we can rely on.
Any other questions?
No, no question but comment. Thank you again for all your hard work, your firm, for going to that for us. We know it's a, it's a battle up there, so two years in a row is something to be proud of, and we, we appreciate that, and we'll go for three years in a row.
Yeah, yeah. Keep going, we'll keep going. I mean, it's a, you've seen, even though with a strong delegation, with strong projects, those of you that have been to Tallahassee during session, you can see how much noise there is up there. Cutting through the noise, having the relationships with staff, having the relationships with the governor's office is sort of what you need to, to wind up in that twenty percent of projects that make it across the finish line.
Just another comment, we have Bulldog on the board, and her name is Miss Amontry for our liaison, our legislative liaison. So, I know she's been hard at work supporting our, her asks, and we also thank Kim for her work and going to that for us, so.
And I would just say, you know, what's great about having the partnership with Andrew is that we have a great relationship with our local delegation, and, and they fight for us, and they, we've had the conversations with them, they are willing to fight for us on these new projects. But those three people are not enough, right? You need one hundred and twenty members of the House, forty members of the Senate, you need all the staff people, and just as important, if not more important, you need somebody who has the relationships in the governor's office to protect the project from the governor's veto. So, that is where, you know, Andrew and his firm really bring the value, and we, we appreciate all those relationships that you have, and you bring us along with this.
Happy to do it. It's a, it's a pleasure to advocate for you guys.
I'd like to add a comment. We talked about the virtuous cycle and how our community supports our school system in many ways, like the referendum. In this case, it's our legislators supporting our school system, and then we, in return, provide that talent pipeline for our community, for our region, and for our state. And Andrew, I want to thank you. You've been a pleasure, you and Ms. Stewart have been a pleasure to work with. And I know, Kim, you and I are planning some, a trip back up to Tallahassee. I look forward to that, and I look forward to another successful session coming up as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Appreciate you guys.
Safe travels to Orlando.
Thank you.
I want to share a comment. Both ends were closed today. Vermont Road was shut down, and Gasboro Road, and Gasboro and seven, and seven seventy-six was shut down. Had to come through July to get through. All right, insurance update.
Insurance issues.
Enter and sign in, please. That's before any of your time.
Morning, Board. Good morning.
So, as you know, back in April, we learned about Fizbit's choice to discontinue the F-ship platform. Well, we knew about it a little bit before that, but at that time, we were tasked with looking at a variety of different options. So, over the last several months, we've gone through and pretty much exhausted every possibility to, to make a recommendation going forward. We've looked at different vendors, different ways of doing it. We even looked at going back to fully insured, which was, we knew was not really an option, but still one to, to look at. So, kind of after looking at all of those, we've decided to make the recommendation, recommendation of the board for us to, to join fleet. Part of that is to help continue taking advantage of our Optum, you know, our X rebates that, that we get, that help towards funding our, our free insurance program that we have for the employees. There's, part of that decision is also there's no increase in adding additional personnel to help, help maintain the insurance program, as well as it, it allows us to continue to build and expand our self-insurance program and offerings. But the biggest advantage is there's no disruption to our employees who, who have our current insurance. So, I just wanted to share that recommendation on, on tonight's agenda. There is an agreement to, to join the, the fleet program, and wanted to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Well, you know, you've been really involved, so I'm just curious your thoughts.
So, I, I just want to say thank you to the board and to Marcus and to Fizbit for giving us the time to, to take a step back and, and take a good look at this because it gave us some time to do that, and I'm glad that we did, instead of just jumping on into unknown waters, because at that time, it was, you would have been the, the biggest one. So, thank you for that. Thank you for all the work that you've done, and we are in good hands. I do believe it. I do believe it. So, we're good.
All right. Thank you.
It's all ahead.
All right. I already want updates.
Andrew Bedford, Dr.
All right. Yep.
A whole team.
How are our leadership, right?
Good morning here. Appreciate your time today to the school board and individuals watching us as we stream. My name is Mike Disjardins, Assistant Superintendent of School Support.
Yep.
Bob Bedford, Assistant Superintendent, Division of Learning. Our Priority One presentation, the goal today is to give you a look into what did we achieve last year? With substance, what are our high-level big rocks for this upcoming school year? So, we're going to kind of change the mode or the mode of presentation that we did last year, where we looked at the current steps for each objective and next steps. We're going to give you a high-level overlook of things such as PBIS, resiliency in mental health, instructional framework, and really touch upon the big rocks for this school year. As you can see, more for our community, the vision of our DSP, and our DSP has really, I think, become ingrained in both of our divisions and all of the divisions. The vision, success for all, our mission to educate, inspire, and support all students to build stronger communities, and you can see our core values. And when we go through each objective, you're going to see these core values are embedded within each objective and in all four priority areas. All right, today, we're going to be looking at Priority One students. The goal of Priority One, prepare all students to graduate ready for the, what we term as the three Es, enrollment, enlistment, or employment. When a student walks across that stage, they get their diploma, they have a plan in place, I think the, the term is turnkey ready for what they think they might want to do in life, which is obviously very important. In October, we'll be looking at Priority Two staff. November will be an overview of Priority Three community. In December will be Priority Four resource, and the plan has at least, right now, when we hit second semester, I think we'll have our academic data for progress monitoring. We'll do a dive into, okay, four months later, where are we at? All right, we have five objectives within Priority One, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bedford to touch upon Objective One, establish frameworks to ensure rigors and gauge instruction in every classroom for every student.
Good morning, Board. As you know, last month, we actually went over kind of the instructional framework and, and what that was and how we had made changes to curriculum, how we had looked at curriculum over summer to prepare for this school year. So, we had really discussed a lot of the instructional framework at the August Board Workshop, but one thing we wanted to draw your attention to is on, on that presentation, I had mentioned the data chats that were going to be new this year to our district. So, I wanted to get into a little bit of detail of what those are. First of all, we're going to split our principals and our APCs, APs into two groups, or four groups, sorry. One group of high, one group of middle, and then two separate elementary schools. Gives us about five groups, five schools in each group. It'll be, consist of a principal and an assistant principal. At the secondary level, it's the principal and the APC. At the elementary level, they only have one assistant principal, so it's the principal and the assistant principal. They will be coming to a meeting together to present what they are doing to monitor their students at the lowest twenty-five, lowest thirty percent of their students. What tiers of support are they using for those students? And they're doing it in front of each other so that the other schools can hear how they're approaching this issue of trying to get gains out of all of our kids, but especially the ones that struggle the most at school. So, they have fifteen minutes to present, and in fairness to the elementaries who like to present things on a board, we are letting them present on a board if they want to. And then there's going to be five minutes for questions. So, in this room will be the cabinet, it will be the directors from the Division of Learning for ESE, CTE, uh, CT won't be there, we're not going to invite them.
Shout out again.
That's right. Obviously, curriculum, and then secondary and elementary. Four of us, along with the ten individuals from the schools, and it should be a, a nice, a nice setup to promote speaking to one another, asking questions, and learning from each other. So, we've given them a data chat prompt, which is, please explain how you will be monitoring the learning gains, particularly those in the lowest thirty percent. Why thirty percent? We know that attendance plays a role in the lowest twenty-five, so we want to make sure we incorporate all those students so when we go into testing, in case we have to take in the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight percentile, because some of those kids don't show up. So, we want them to also describe their two-tier and two-tier, three intervention plans with us, how they're pulling kids out, pushing into classrooms, all of those items. We gave an extra assignment to the high schools. We want to know what their graduation rate is right now. So, each high school has a graduation cap right now. That's based on students that have dropped out in the prior three years, who, so they, we call it the, the cap graduation, it's, it's the, the highest they can get. And then, what are you doing with the kids in front of you? We want to know that for the CAPR, which is, obviously, the acceleration points that we get for those students. Are those students, what is your percent right now? They should know that. And then, what did you do with the students? Did you put them into classes? Are they, how, how many of those students aren't in classes that lead to a CAPR score? So, we gave that a little bit of an extra assignment, but nothing too much. And then, the last question, obviously, is what support do you need from us? That's why cabinet's in there. What are the things that are barriers right now that you see are getting in the way of doing what we need you to do, which is to really monitor the learning gains in the classroom at the student level? So, that is really, and then, just a reminder to the board, that we actually didn't test PM one as early as we did last year, and we're testing PM two earlier than we did last year. So, when I bring you that data, I'll remind you again, but we've kind of compressed that. The main reason we compressed that time was so that by the end of December, we will be done with PM two testing. We will provide principals and assistant principals with the data on the day that they return, or the day after they return, there's two days there that they can work with. They will be able to push out to their staffs the plan to move forward based on that PM two data, which we've never done fully as a district until this year. So, Doug will be hard at work at the end of PM two, at the end of December, preparing for that Wednesday, or preparing for that professional learning day when we come back. But we're hoping to gain as much time as we can in Semester Two for working with our students. Questions over the data chats or the calendar? All right, seeing none, I am going to turn it now to our Strategy Two, Dr. Grandstra.
All right, thank you. All right, come with gifts.
You can shut that door with something.
All right, so here's, take one, pass around. What is these, brand-new brochures? It's a high-level overview of the career and tech ed programs we have in Charlotte County. So, anytime I go speak before a group, I spoke recently to the Sales Tax Committee, I pass these out, so everybody knows all the great things we're doing here. And I think the more time we get it out, this is our first draft of this, so as always, we're going to make edits, make it look better, improve it. And next is our printed version of the Career Planning Guide. So, it's on the website, but now we have a printed version, so I'll pass these out for you. All right, he already has one, and so. And I'll walk you through it. You know, the beginning, you see the very first page, you have soft skills listed, that was where we met our business committee a little while ago, that was one of the first things they mentioned, you know, what is important for our students to have when they graduate high school. If you go through the Career Planning Guide, you'll see the elementary pages in there, K through five, it's the first time this year implementing a elementary, K through five, Career Planning Guide. And then we have our plan for grades six through twelve. Followed through there, you'll see the three E checklist. In addition, we have the artifacts for each of the checklist. When a student completes all the items in their checklist prior to graduation, they will receive a medallion they can wear with their graduation cap and gown. And then at the end, for our instructors and for our schools, we put together a sample pacing guide. They can kind of schedule how they want to do their career planning guide. They don't have to use it, just something to start with. What's nice is we made some updates to Zello. So, much of the Career Planning Guide is in Zello, and now when a student logs into Zello, they see a task list, the things they need to do, or to, or to-do list on their Zello link. And so, it's been very helpful for people, make sure they know what to do next, instead of trying to figure out on their own, and we've been able to track on some new reports that Zello's created, so we're actually pretty high usage on there. So, that's the printed version of the Career Planning Guide. For the public notes, we have the new advanced manufacturing program at Port Charlotte High School. It's open right now as we speak, and so, there's, you know, four sections of that class in there. The lab, the Jeff Harvest team did a great job getting that lab classroom ready in terms of facility-wise. We can't control delays from the manufacturers of some of the equipment, so those are arriving, some have already arrived, and we've got one more piece to come in there, it's a robot supposed to get in there next week or so. But the teacher's doing a great job, the students are excited about it, and really excited how that can help us grow our kind, because we want our students to have a high-paying job waiting for them when they graduate high school. We also want programs that can help drive the, the economy, help our current employers, and also help us attract new employers to Charlotte County. And also, cybersecurity at Len Bay has been launched, it's going. We have a great class, great instructor. We already talked about our first cybersecurity competitions with Cyber Florida. They're a very important partner with us with these programs, along with Space Florida. Both of these programs are Space Florida, and that brochure you passed out, we have a little Space Florida logo next to all the Space Academy programs that link up with there. And then, as Zello mentioned, to the, the, the reporting, students, ease of using it, they log in, first task, next task, they do it, and we already have pretty strong numbers with Zello, you know, but I can look by grade, by school, and they're much farther along this year than they were last year at this time, so very happy with that and getting the word out there with the schools. I put there for the public so they can see the latest data regarding our various numbers. One there still says pending, and that's what I'm going to bring back to the steering committees for the DSP, that's the on-track graduation. We spent last year trying to develop a formula to use to create it. Tracking, on-track graduation can be an incredibly complex formula, because you're figuring out what is the definition of on-track graduation. We're almost on creating a, a rule and focus, and all of a sudden, focus, hey, we have one for you. And so, okay, we're trying that one out, we want to get some feedback from the steering committee before we publish a number on there to make sure it's a number that represents truly what we feel is the, the on-track graduation. It can also be a useful tool for our schools. And then, next slide. I would like some pictures, so you can see this, but also there, the right, that's actually inside the classroom for aviation at Charlotte High School, there is a plane in the classroom. And I was been assured by two FAA licensed AMP mechanics, there's no way that engine can turn on, because there's an engine in there, and there are fluids in the engine, not, not, not gas. So, the, that plane cannot turn on. You know, the keys were in the ignition, it can, it will not turn on, but it's a very useful tool. That is a kit plane that was donated to us by the company called Zenith, not the TV company, but they, they make kit airplanes. And so, if somebody can buy a kit, comes a big crate, it comes with very detailed instruction on how to put the plane together. So, our students have a partially-built plane, the wings are off to the side, and that's the teacher being interviewed by Fox Four for the first day of school. But what's neat is that we have another plane that's still in the bottom of the crate, that was donated to us from that company as well. So, our students over the year are going to be able to put it together, and the plan is, with that partnership with that company, Zenith, is we will put the planes together, they'll certify it, and then they'll eventually sell those planes to be real planes for people to use, and so.
Pretty labor.
What I see it as, so, and I'll highlight some other partnerships we're doing, so there's a, I don't want to name specific companies, just, you know, on a form, but there's a company in Ponagorda that makes steel barricades for like parking lots, so you can't like run your car through a lot, a steel barricade comes up, there's electronic control panel for little barricades. Our students at CTC are going to be trained by that company to assemble those control panels for that. So, we get the free supplies provided by the company, but then, our students get experience with real world stuff, or someone's going to pay you real money for them, buy it, it's going to use it around the world. With manufacturing, I met with a manufacturer last Friday, because they're, they're, they have new facilities. Well, one, we got a nice piece of equipment donated to us when we have a facility, and then also, it's a great machine, it's probably built in the seventies and eighties, it does a great job for instruction, a great, they're using it right now, but they want to get a newer, fancier machine that's faster, and so, but for an instructional tool, it's great. But I asked the, the Vice President of that company, it's like, is there anything our students can make for you? You know, is there something we can, we can produce that takes something off your plate and could deal kind of like I talked with the other company, where you supply the materials, you train our students, and they learn how to do it, and he gave me a whole list of projects, you know, we can do. What we'll do is it'll help this company be more successful, and our students get real world experience, and we don't have to pay for the supplies. He gave an example of a plate that we can make for this device. I want to be too careful, I want to be fair with what the company is, but we can make this. But we can make this plate for the company. They've mentioned drilling holes through it. Because they had to make these plates maybe once, a few times a year, but they had to stop what they're doing, figure out how to do it again, make that one plate. Where our students can make, say, ten of those, they can stockpile at basically no cost to them. Now we can help them be more successful, and so with their numbers, with their corporate office, you know, somewhere else in the world, can make their building look more attractive to, put more business in this one in Ponagorda. So, I think you have enough clues, I'm able to figure out who it is, but the, uh, that's the idea, those partnerships. Because that's the key, when you have turnkey ready, well, if you are already doing work for that company, you're already turnkey ready. One of the companies I talked about actually hired one of our instructors over the summer to work for them, part-time. So that person's getting real hand experience and building those partnerships, those relationships, so they can pass those on to our students.
I was gonna make a comment, um, I don't know if this is normal, but when I speak, my husband sometimes doesn't listen. And uh, so he knows, I mean, I've told him about all the great things we're doing, the career and tech ed, and the airport and all that. And our middle son started high school at Charlotte High this year and was enrolled in the aeronautics program um for his period. So we walked into the room and he saw the plane, he was like, there's a plane in here. And I was like, yeah, I know. I, he was taking pictures, sending it to his friends, he told everybody, he's like, do you know what they're do- It was really cool to watch somebody kind of experience it for the fir-, who should have known, but experience it for the first time and be so excited. So I mean, just the, watching other people go through that and see the incredible things in the programs of our schools, it's really, really unique, our community, for sure.
Having that plane in the room, now the kid's like, okay, the, the school district's real. They see the construction of the hangar going on, and when that opens up, it's gonna be really something special from there. And uh, having those parts, now an advantage we have over other schools that have this similar program. One, we have a great legislative team that helped us get the funding for that hangar. We also have an A FAA AMP program just down the road at the airport. I will say this again, we're the only school district in the world building two hangars at one time. And they're, they're both gonna be done about the same time. Uh, a lot of great things going on there, and so, uh, the FAA program at the airport's really um growing from there. And so lots of exciting opportunities, and I'm really excited about the prospect of adding welding to Charlotte County. When I meet with the Economic Development Office, that's one of the number-one calls I get, is do they have a welding program in Charlotte County? And the answer has always been no. I've talked to every welding program in the area, they're all getting Charlotte County students that are driving an hour or plus to their sites to do welding. So if we can do that here locally, our students can, heck, we can also build a great program and train them for the future, but also attracts new businesses to the area. That's the key, high-paying job for our students from a student perspective, but also, we bring in new businesses to the community, which helps improve quality of life.
So excited for all of this. I have one question, kind of really going back to Dr. Bedford's slide, about having when the high school principals and APCs come in-
Yes.
And asking them um what they're doing to, to increase that CACR percentage.
Other monitoring it, oh, the CACR.
So, what would you say is, because it seems to me that that would be like a no-brainer, that we should have ninety, ninety-five percent of students should automatically be signing up, because it's not just these career courses, right? They can take AP, ACE, dual involvement, any of these career courses. So what's the, what's the number-one reason for students not completing one of those courses before they graduate?
It's the systems that schools had or didn't have, when you look across the board. So, um, at one of our schools, the systems have been in place for nine, ten, eleven years, right? And what I mean the system is, is that when you come in as a ninth grader, you're, you're being told that it's the expectation that you get this, and this is important, and here are the classes that you need to sign up, and here are your electives, right? And all the electives lead to a certification, or you're in the advanced classes, which we already know lead, because you're taking ACE as a freshman. Um, so, when you get to the point when you wanna go there, you have to play catch-up with the prior classes who haven't come into the school that way. And now you're limited in space, because now you're pushing multiple people into classrooms, and you may not have it even set up at the school level that all of your electives lead to certs, or um you don't have enough ACE or EP or whatever, you know? So it's really kind of, as we look, it probably uh took the, the first school that did it, it probably took them four or five years to really get to the point where it is just now. Everyone comes in, no one complains, yeah, sign me up, here, here's a class I'm taking. On top of that, we found that if, after the freshman year, they don't have it, you have to put that student in another class that attempts it. And then, in their junior year, if they don't have it, you have to follow up. So you have to, as the students go, yeah, they'll forget about me, or, you know, I don't have to do this, it's not that important. You basically get to the senior year now where, I believe Lemon Bay going into this year is already at a seventy-five percent CACR rate with their seniors, and they're just playing catch-up on new transfers in, or kids that have just failed, failed, not taking it seriously, and they're in their, in their senior year. So it's really the system uh that does it. So what we wanna look at right now is, as we work with, who are your seniors who aren't in that? Like, what is your maximum CACR score you can get based on all your seniors being in there? And then, what are you doing for your juniors? What are you doing for your sophomores? What are you doing for your freshmen? And it, it just takes a little bit of time to actually get that freshman year set up in place, but.
Okay, that explains it.
Yeah.
I thought it could all be done in one year, first year, like a hundred percent of the kids would be signed up.
Because of offerings, and, and that, that's another area too that we've really pushed, is that if you're offering elective classes, they need to have value to the student that is taking them, other than they just like them. So if it's art, are you in AP art? Are you doing AP art? So, so we do that as well, because, you know, you have some art kids that might not like CTE certifications. So what are you offering every student, the availability to get it, with the expectation that they get it? So, yeah, that's where we're at.
All right, good. Nice. All right, next. So I've got strategy three. Um, as you guys know, we created that data protocol, and we started to train and use that with our district staff and with our administrators uh last school year. Uh, that's just an example of what our data protocol looks like. I know it's itty-bitty-tiny. Um, uh, our goal for last school year was to have um twenty-five percent of our district staff, twenty-five percent of our admin staff, to have partial or full implementation of that data protocol. And we actually exceeded that. Um, we had sixty-four percent of our district staff reported using it at partial or full implementation, and fifty-two percent of our admin were using that at partial or full implementation. So we actually adjusted our goals for this upcoming year um to seventy-five percent for both district and, and admins at the school level. And then we have twenty-five percent for our staff. So this year, we're looking to expand it and build that capacity, so that we're rolling it out to our deans, our coaches, our teachers during like data digs and things like that. So, that is-
Let me ask you, what's the why behind the data protocol? Why do we want twenty schools using the same protocol looking through?
Yeah. Well, 'cause we all wanna be able to look at data in a systematic way that is similar. So regardless of where you move, school to school, um, we have a similar process for that. We know that looking at data through a system makes better sense than just kind of everybody eyeballing the data, using their guts. Um, it's, it's a more effective, efficient way to look at data. So the other thing I wanted to do on here, you guys have been hearing me talk about the EduClimber program. Uh, I wanted to give you kind of a little sneak peek of what some of those things look like, that some of the teachers are doing. So, let me just switch this over to my computer. So EduClimber, as you guys know, took the place of Edis um for this school year. Oh, what do I need to do? Take one up there. Oh, oh, I'm plugged into the wrong thing. Where am I plugging it? Right here? Oh, perfect. All right. So we um trained our support staff through last school year, and we trained our trainers through um the summer, and then we just finished in August. So now we have asked our train the trainers, every school has four train the trainers, to go out and train their entire staff um by the end of September. So we have some that have already finished, we have other ones that are kind of in the process. Uh, there are many that chose to chunk it, which I think was a good idea, um, because it's a lot of information, it's a lot of change, and there's a lot of hands-on practice with the training that we're rolling out. It's not just a sit and get. So I wanted to show you a couple things. My poor child is my guinea pig always. So, this is a student profile, so any teacher can see any of their students' student profiles. So this is just from an individual student lens. Um, you can see this school year's information on there. There's basic information along the left-hand side under her picture that can tell them quickly, are they an ELL student? Are they a five or four student? Are they homeless? Do they have an IEP? So they can quickly jump in there and see, there's even vision hearing screening information on the bottom of that. So they can see, you know, are there any issues there, things that I just need to be aware of in my students? Um, there's also, uh, if she had incidents, which thank goodness she does not.
She has very good attendance.
She does have good attendance, whoops, and I clicked on, I clicked on something. Um, so you would see if she had incidents up there, they would show, they'd be like, three minors, two majors, that would all show there, you can click on them and see them. Um, interventions, of course, she's my guinea pig too, so she always has a bazillion interventions in there. And you can see, are they on-track, off-track? Hers unfortunately is off-track because she's red. Uh, and you can dig farther into those too. You can see right now, she already has some scores in there from this school year. Um, not a lot, but what I think is really cool, and a lot of teachers were excited, is if you go back to twenty-four, twenty-five, you can now see everything for your student. So you can see all of their gradebook grades, their fast scores, their writing scores, all their math scores, going all the way down. So it's just a really nice way to be able to have that picture of that student that's coming into you, that we didn't necessarily have before altogether like that. Um, and you can dig even farther into any of these. Up at the top too, you can see her attendance from last school year. So that'll also tell you, you know, did she have an attendance issue last year? Does she have any forms in there? That would be like problem-solving forms, things like that. Does she have any tags? So that could be like early warning signs. We set up early warning signs in there, so we know if students have two or more early warning signs, they're less likely to graduate from high school. So those are in there as well. So that's the student profile. And then I wanted to show you one other thing.
My, my personal, I've actually-
My poor child, I'm like-
She's got good grades.
I know, not just my daughter, not, not just kidding, my poor son. He's very cute. He's very athletic too. I'll stick with that. Okay, so I'm moving to top-secret mode, 'cause I also wanna show you a report from a teacher perspective. Um, so, a teacher can go in here and click on class. So they can do this at the beginning of the school year. Um, I'm gonna pick my son's teacher. They also end up my guinea pigs too, so he's actually in fifth grade. Um, so we're pulling her class from this school year. It's an elementary, so it doesn't really matter what period I pick. But a secondary could pick and say, I just wanna see my first-period class, my second-period class. Um, they can choose specific categories, so if they just wanna see fast data, if they just wanna see their uh WEDIS scores for ELL, they can do that. Um, I often say, just pull it the way it is, and you can see everything. Um, and then I changed this to twenty-four, twenty-five, because then that's gonna look at their information from last year. So now you can see your entire class for this year with all of their last-year information. Um, so it breaks it down graphically, um, but it also breaks it down through a data wall. So, right now, we've got her class in here. You can see they keep got, keep on going. We're in super-secret mode, so you don't see who the students are, you just see their little numbers. Um, so you can see, these are all of their ELA, ELA scores from last school year. They can see all the fast scores, gradebook grades. They can sort any of these, or if they're like, oh, who's coming in to me? These are my babies that I want in that tier-three group. These are the ones I need in my tier-two groups. Um, it's very easy to see, and then as scores come in this school year, they'll start to see those populate for this school year too. You can even see those little helping hands there. Um, those are interventions. So you'll see, this kid already has an intervention in there, and they were on track. So you can easily see, you know, are they struggling, and do we have something in place for them and isn't working? Um, and then you can break it down into math, science, social studies, incidents, or our behavior. So if we go to a data wall for that, that was something really cool for some of our uh teachers and staff as well. Because they may wanna know, or even before staff, when they're doing scheduling, did I really put a whole bunch of kids in this class that were like, whoa, you know, this is packed with a bunch of kids that are struggling? Uh, maybe we wanna disperse them out a little bit more, so some of our APs are very interested in that. And then, of course, our teachers knowing, like, who do I maybe need to, day one, just start developing that relationship with? Maybe have a phone call with that parent, so I know, starting to develop that relationship. Um, and then, there's also an attendance one. And you can view that from a data wall too. So they'll be able to see that from this school year, but they'll also be able to see that from last school year. So again, same thing, building that relationship with that, with that parent, with that student, day one. Do they have issues uh with coming to school? So, yeah.
Very nice.
Any questions?
A whole lot of that.
Cool, right? I know.
Boy, how did teachers do it before?
Yeah, and they went to a lot of different places. So we're still working on, we're still building capacity, we're still doing a lot of training, but I think it has a lot of value, I really do. And there's a lot of other pieces in here, this is just kind of a little tiny snapshot.
Those reduce excuses.
What's the feedback compared to Edis? I mean, I've, I have experience with Edis, and it was not, uh-
It was not good, right? No, we've had a lot of positive feedback. I think right now, some of our schools um are feeling a little overwhelmed. Some of them that have, were really into Edis and did it all the time, um, they're super excited, because it's just a much easier platform. They're finding it's easier to put information in there, get information out. I think the ones that weren't really using Edis that well either are really struggling with just being overwhelmed. So, but we have a plan for that, plan for training, plan for support for that. Uh, so we'll get there. Any questions about that?
It's pretty cool. She's done a great job. It's been a heavy lift over the last year and a half to get to the, to get to this spot.
Okay, oh, did you mess it up? Okay, Jack, I think you're in, I'm next.
Behavior. All right, good morning, board. It's your president. Uh, objective one, strategy four is implementing with fidelity a school-wide positive behavior intervention and support system, which is known as PBIS uh within our current MTS framework. So updating on our goals, uh, one of them was students receiving one or more office discipline referrals. We wanted to reduce that by two percent out of every hundred kids that received referral in our district, and we met that goal. So every twenty-seven out of a hundred kids had a referral last year, that's down two percent. And we'll continue to strive to knock that down to twenty-five this school year. Okay, so how are we doing that? So one big initiative that we've done um with behavior is introduce what we call the minor infraction. And this is key for everyone to know, because what we've done is we've gone in and the teachers and staff can go in and click a button that says minor infraction. And what that means, it means that the teacher is identifying that they've addressed a tier-one behavior. A behavior that is not disruptive to the classroom, and it's not disruptive to the safety of our students. But that teacher had to intervene with a low-level uh remediation tactic. Uh, but we didn't wanna kick it to a major referral where there's discipline that's gonna be administered. So what that means is that we are now having another data entry point where we're identifying areas of tier-one, but it didn't reach the office of the dean or the assistant principal. That student did not leave instruction. That student just was redirected by the teacher. So, what happens there is that a teacher can intervene with the same minor behavior, and on the fourth time, it will kick an automatic referral, and that focus does that for them. So what we're trying to do is slow down and implement positive classroom management tactics, so we're not inundating our, our offices with discipline that really could have been addressed and should be addressed inside our classrooms. So what we're naturally gonna see there as that, is we're gonna see our referrals actually go down, because we're not writing a multiple referrals, we're putting in minor infractions.
If I could jump in real quick, we're not telling teachers they cannot write a referral. Teachers have an option with every input they do, um, 'cause every discipline incident is unique um in, in a classroom, in a school. So if a teacher wants to make it a major, 'cause it was a major disruption in the classroom, um, they have the option to do that. So we definitely take their recommendation one hundred percent.
So as a parent, are you able to see minor referrals in focus?
Great question. No.
Okay.
Okay, that could change, so we're-
I would love to see it. Like, I wanna know. Did they get overcome today? Like, tell me, so I can reinforce it at home.
That is the number-one question. So this, this is a baseline here. Uh, and so we, we've met with a lot of stakeholders, teachers, administrators, you know? And one thing that we're very careful of is what do we wanna share when it comes to information? Because we're trusting teachers to put in proper descriptions, and so we wanna make sure we're, we're doing it right before we roll it out. So the answer is not yet, but I think we're heading that way.
I would say, my kids came home and were like, we're gonna get minor infractions this year. Like, it, it resonated with them.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it, so thank you. I can see all of them.
Feedback so far from the deans, APs, that has been really refreshing, is that the data is now allowing them to have proactive conversations with their teachers about classroom management. In other words, the old model, everything was always on fire. And what this is saying is, I don't have a fire, but I can start to see something kind of brewing. So let's get in front of it in a proactive way, and let's intervene and support our kids and our staff before we start suspending, before we start putting them in ISS. Did it really meet the threshold where we have to administer some type of consequence? Versus, let's handle and build that relationship and keep the power in the classroom within the teachers', you know, threshold.
Overall, the feedback from schools.
Very good.
It's, it's, it's when they pitched it and Rebecca and Jack pitched this at the end of last year, I was a little skeptical. But they're excellent leaders. We, what we went for, they went for. And the feedback we've received from the schools genuinely has been awesome. It has, I keep asking, what, where's the negative? Give me the negative. If I, we haven't heard, I haven't heard anything so far. And when you can get your secondary principals hooked, you know you're on, on track with where you're going. So it, it, once again, it's a work in progress, but it, it's looking.
Yep. So when we roll out and have some more data, we'll be able to see where the trends are and what, you know, data points we get in. And like Dr. D alluded to, is that administration has the authority to move it up to a major if they felt it met a major.
It's just good because oftentimes, teachers, you are doing those corrective things in your classroom, but nobody's aware of it. And so then you get to that point where you're so frustrated, you write that referral and everyone's like, why didn't even know this kid was a problem in your class? And so it's such a great way for the administrators to see, oh no, she's already taken these steps and now it is time for something different.
And another awesome fact of that is, we're really pitching communication to home. So with the minors, like we're using Parent Square, our email, like the first step is just reach out and let that family know, hey, I, I addressed this behavior, but there's no discipline. Because as a parent, you don't want to hear your child being disciplined, but you appreciate the fact that you're intervening to help my child be successful without going to, to that level. So that communication is very key because as an administrator, I'm giving you that phone call on the major referral and guess what? The parent's not surprised. Because they've been contacted several times about this behavior. It's just now gotten to the point where unfortunately, we're going to administer some kind of consequence because it met that threshold. So lot less angry parents and upset, because why am I just hearing this for the first time? When you want to suspend my kid for behavior, for classroom disruption? When they go, I know, it's the fourth time, I get it. So I understand, I support you. So that's really been great.
Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this concept started, the conversation started last spring when we asked our teachers, what can we take off your plate? And if you recall, the feedback that we received, classroom disruptions came to the top of the list. So credit to your team and working with our assistant principals and deans to come up with this solution because we think it's making a big impact.
Thank you. And, and what's the other thing too, is learning obviously is what we're here, right? But professional learning pieces that we're encouraging is classroom management techniques. We've, we've do, we need to get back to providing our teachers with more tools for their tool belts with today's kid. So that they can build those relationships and not look at moving kids out of the classroom, let's figure out how to keep them in classroom.
I have a question, kind of really not really, do we do detentions anymore?
Yes.
Okay. Is that just like a school by school thing, or is that?
School by school, you know, some new lunch, some have like Wednesday school, but yeah.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Jack, quick question. So I like this idea. But are there certain infractions that teachers know this, these can be considered minor infractions? These are.
So what we did is we brought all the administrative, well, those who work with discipline. We brought them in the room, we took the code of conduct and we said, hey, what, let's identify what we feel is a minor. And we came down with eleven. So these are what we're currently looking at. And then again, this is open for conversation throughout the year. And so going into next year, we may see fewer, we may see more, depending on what our data tells us. But they picked it, they agreed with it, and that's what we're rolling with. So everything's here and then what we have here, we added, was called major referral. And what the teacher can then at that point says, hey, this is a major, and then kick it up, and then the dean and AP get it. And they're notified. APs and deans are notified when a minor infraction is submitted. They do not have to process any discipline. They're just saying, hey, I wrote a minor, here's what it was. They can click a button, it clears it and goes away. So everybody's in a loop on what's going on.
Thank you.
Yep. So finally, with all that fun stuff, another goal was to increase the number of PBIS model schools. You may recall last year, we had Liberty and Violent. Respectfully, we've added two more. So we have LA Anger and we have Sally Jones on top of Liberty and Violent being repeaters. So once we get their banners in, we'll bring them to the school board meeting and we'll recognize their great accomplishment as that. So my final piece, which is really cool, is all ten of our elementaries are using the same incentive point system. It's called PBIS Rewards. So we are able to get a great deal with Navigate 360, which Becky has brought on board. They own PBIS Rewards, so this is a demo. And if I want to go to a store, it'll show me my school stores, what things I have available and how many points I can buy them for. So if I'm doing well in class, my teacher comes up to me, scans my badge, and it starts adding points onto my account. Families can see it, the kids can see it. And you can have your school store within your whole school, you can have it within your classroom. But it says, hey, you know what, everyone's doing really, really well. So I'm going to go to points and I'm going to add points to the group. And I, I'm messing all up. I can add to my homeroom, three points for being prepared, respectful, integrity, and it ties into their school values. So every elementary school has this. So what's great about that is we meet quarterly at our point of contact meeting and they're sharing best practices. So they're really growing together with this program and really finding it to be a benefit. They're real excited about it. So it's going really well.
Another question. So in Focus, I was in yesterday looking at my kid's stuff, and next to their names at Charlotte High, it says like Tarpon Tokens. Is that what that is?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, good point though, because last year, Focus has a point system. That's, we bought it from Focus. So Charlotte High has chosen to use it. And that's where the Tarpon Tokens. Same idea, different platform, but they use it for free.
Do they scan their IDs that way too? No, oh, okay, okay.
That's, that's really what the key was on this, is that this is really cool. This is another purpose of wearing the ID. So like a lot of schools, like when you walk in the door for just having your ID that day, you get a point. So kids are really excited, like, look, I have my ID today, you know? So when we do our PBIS walkthroughs, it's great. I'm in the cafeteria, I'll ask the kid what their acronym stands for. And then I'm like, can you scan, scan their, their badge? And they're just like, here you go, you know? So it, it's, it's a culture and it's really positive, so. And on the final note is, we'll be able to purchase this for all of our schools next year because Suncoast blessed us with the grant. So that way we can keep this sustainable without asking for money. So that's really exciting, so that we can take care of them and hopefully bring on a few more as we go along, so. That's that.
Okay, let's move on real quick. Flores cannot be with us today, so I'm going to be presenting the attendance, which is one of the cornerstones of why we're here. The three Es, learning, so on and so forth. Attendance has been a, or the board's been here for a while. Attendance has been a big push. Doing really good before COVID, COVID happened, and not just Charlotte County, all over the place. But COVID kind of threw us for a loop. I feel like last year was our first year of getting back to normal, if you would, when it comes to attendance. And to, to kind of show you where we're at last year, our goal for last year, and we're looking at chronic absen, students that are chronically absent, whether it's excused, unexcused, so on and so forth. Our goal was twenty-six point two nine percent. We actually averaged twenty-five point two three percent. So we actually lowered our chronic absentee rate by over two percent from the previous school year, which is with a lot of work from the schools and district staff. There's not a one stop golden ticket on how you fix attendance. It, it's, it's a tough one because it's a relationship between the school and what's going on at the house. Every student has a different story. Okay, so how do we start out this school year? How do we try to break down the barriers for principals who, when they're getting ready for a school year, have so many different tasks to juggle? Before the school year started, we provided to all of our principals an individual list of all the kids in their school, broken down by tier. Okay, so if you're Port Charlotte Middle School, you have three or four different elementary feeder schools coming in. Any school that, any student that was going to be enrolled at Port Charlotte Middle School starting on August eleventh, the principal got a list of all the students broken down by absentee rate. Okay, so you have to, we broke it down, I believe, students that had twenty percent or more absences, ten, ten to twenty, five to ten. So they were able to figure out, all right, these are the students you're getting. In your student, in your attendance teams, which is part of the PBIS MTSS structure. You know that these students had a problem last year with attendance rate. How are you going to support them at the, at the home? And I know Port Charlotte Middle, for example, making phone calls, welcoming parents, make sure your kid gets to school. How can we help you? So some of that proactive reach out, that was provided to principals, I think, two and a half to three weeks before the year even started. So here's your data. We're breaking down the data in easy to read, easy to use fashion. Now here's some suggestions on what you need to do with it. And let's run with it before the school year gets started. As you know, as school board members, because you receive the email every night at eleven o'clock, we have the daily email rate, the, the daily attendance rate that we emailed to, to all principals and certain members of the district office staff. You click on that email or you click on the chronic absentee percentage of your school and the students actually pop up, the students that are chronically absent. So you don't really have to look for the data, click, click, ease of use. Now, with your, in your school-based attendance teams, what do you do with the data? Kind of piggyback, and that's a word I use a lot, as my staff laughs at me when I use it, because if it's been working for twenty-nine years, I'm going to continue. But to piggyback on what Mr. Bedford said, when we talk to the principals, well, we're going to do it next weekend again in October. We want elementaries, middles, middle schools and high schools to see what other schools' attendance rates are, what their chronic absentee rate is. Hey, what are you doing about it? Deep Creek Elementary, last school year, I think they were under seventeen percent with chronic absentee rate. Okay, if I'm one of the other principals sitting at the table, what are you doing? How do you drill down to the individual students so successfully? So we are having those chats, professionals learning from professionals, okay? Let's not work in silos. So I think that's been a big part. Some other areas that we were tackling through attendance, something we're, this is Flores was the spearheaded this. Project Rise. Our social workers rise with their students from pre-K to kindergarten, from fifth to sixth grade, and from eighth grade to ninth grade. So if I am a social worker at Ponte Awarde Middle School, I have X number of students that had an issues with attendance or maybe some other things, mental health, learning, learning issues. They actually, one day a week, will go from Ponte Awarde Middle School over to Charlotte High School in Mon for those students. And eventually, as a school year, probably around the third, nine weeks, pass those students off to the social worker. So we don't lose students through the cracks, if you will, which has been pretty darn successful. There are schools that have standardized dress code. We want to make sure that a parent at Peace River, for example, can't, doesn't have the money to buy uniforms for their children, we'll try to assist them with that and provide that, break down the barriers. Shift this year, we're using Parent Square with the help of Claudette Smith, who's been awesome with this. When parents are no longer, for the most part, getting those daily phone calls, all right, we, we do Parent Square, if your child's absent, you'll get a text message. You literally click on it and you can report their absence. All those responses go to the data tech and to the principal and are loaded into Focus and the attendance teams look at that. So we're, we have a higher rate of parental response on why is your child absent? And we've worked with the parents on that. That's, that was a shift for me. I'm old school technology sometimes. Got talked into it and it seems like it's, 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 it's a modernizing things. Because everyone carries a cell phone and we don't usually sometimes listen to that phone call that we don't know who's, who's calling me. It can go to voicemail type of thing. So trying to break down those barriers and communicate with parents and assist parents. I'm probably jumping ahead of myself a little bit, but we're also looking at getting the Focus app for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Right now, parents log into Focus, obviously through the web. Sometimes it's not easy to read on your phone. Well, if we can get the Focus app and you click the Focus icon and your ch, your children, child or children's data comes up, we want them to look at attendance, we want them to be able to look at discipline, grades. We want to make that more user friendly for parents to get some more buy-in with parental communication.
Dr. D, will we be able to see data on excused versus unexcused absences and see if there's an increase in our excuse? Because parents are giving the reasons why?
We definitely can. Yeah, matter of fact, that's a great idea. When I come back, I, I'm guessing in January, we can, we can provide that. Hundred, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. And this is a work in progress. I would say nearly everybody has a cell phone, but the ones that don't get the email or they get a phone call. So we do have, we, we do have a method to contact every parent, but the, but the text message has been a game changer.
So if a parent doesn't respond, does it go under unexcused? Or does the school contact the parent?
Un, unexcused, yeah.
So Dr. D.
If, if they sense a pattern, then they would definitely reach out to the parent. That's what the school attendance teams are supposed to be doing.
So one of the questions I had last year, and I remember this had to do, I think maybe with Edge Climber, is that when you talked about the barriers, why parents, especially at the elementary level, why parents aren't getting their kids to school? And I said, is there a way that we can track? So say if it is uniform and the parent says, well, I didn't have a clean uniform for my kid. And say we know at a particular school that that's eighty percent of the problem. Are we doing that? Are we tracking? Because when I talked to you about it last year, we were doing it informally. We didn't really have a good way to say generate a report.
So Edge Climber is not, but I'm thinking that Parent Square, we'll have to check and see. Because when you, like as a parent, I already maybe had a son absent once, got one of those and had to put in why. So we'll have to see about that data.
I really want to see us do that because I feel like what we're doing is we're looking at the downstream problem, right? We're looking at the result, which is that twenty-five percent of kids are chronically absent. We're not looking at the root cause. Until we look at the root cause, we're never going to solve this problem down here.
We, we are looking at the root cause to a cer, certain level when our attendance teams drill down to those students or in contact with the parents. But to answer your question, I actually have a video conference tomorrow or a meeting with Parent Square. They offer something called Attendance Plus. My assumption is they'll be able to do something like that, yes.
Now, here, you know, when I'm out there at schools, like here's what I hear, it could be something like that, like they don't have a clean uniform. It can also be what I see when you talk about the excuse versus unexcused, that, you know, I was at an elementary school and here's how these particular parents think. My kid has straight A's. It's okay if I take a two-week cruise over Thanksgiving because they have straight A's. And they're not making the connection that just because your kid has straight A's and turned in all of their homework, doesn't mean that they're getting a five on the fast.
Part of our messaging plan this year, as we, we have standardized messaging from September all the way till May, is attendance tips, just like that, that we'll be able to push out.
Grades don't mean.
Hundred percent, yeah. So, yeah, we're, we're definitely tackling that. So it's, it's been a work in progress. I think we're moving in, in, in the right direction. September is obviously attendance awareness month, so we're pushing that pretty hard right now. And our data, as of this morning, when I took a look at the, the email that as you guys received, we're looking much better than we did, we're, we're looking better than we did last year when it comes to daily average attendance. I know I'm not, we're supposed to look at chronic absentee, absenteeism, but our daily average attendance rate is higher than it was last year at this time, which is baby steps in the right direction. So everything seems to be coming together with the technology piece, our school attendance, the work they've done with MTS, everyone's done. MTSS, PBIS, it, it, it connects. MTSS umbrella.
Yes, good job.
Okay. Good job too.
Okay. Yeah, last but not least, so Strategy Five is the mental health component. So really, our focus this past school year has to increase awareness of who we are, what we do, what we provide. And we actually had a couple of things that are going. So the first one, I don't know if you guys have met Hannah before, Hannah Dickinson. So she is a Port Charlotte High School student who actually ended up coming to one of our DSP meetings and had an idea. So she connected with our Strategy Five committee because she had walked into a restroom at Port Charlotte High, I think it was actually two years ago now. And there was just some negative sayings on the stalls inside. And it just hit her. She's like, if I can't even go to the bathroom and have positivity, like, how's everybody else going to feel? So she actually started this project called We Are Enough. She got with one of her buddies who is a fantastic artist. And they created this poster and there's actually stickers to go with it too. So she partnered with us because she said, I really want to get this out to all of our schools so that all of our students can feel we are enough. She goes, because we're constantly feeling like, you know, my grades aren't enough, you know? My, I'm not going to make it into the college I want, I'm not enough. So she wanted to spread that message, we are enough. And we loved that it was coming from the student perspective. So we actually partnered with her, we made copies of those posters. So we printed two for every secondary school and we handed those out at our. Um, so we printed two for every, um, secondary school and we handed those out at our, um, back-to-school, school-based mental health meeting there and we had her do a little, uh, presentation with that as well. So the more we can do this and get those students on board, that message is going to be so much stronger. So we're continuing to work with that and she's just phenomenal. If you guys can ever meet her, oh my gosh, she's amazing. Um, we also have our school-based mental health posters. So we are currently working on printing these and creating these for all of our school-based mental health staff members across the district. We want to just have consistency. So that if a student is at Port Charlotte High or they're at even Sally Jones Elementary, you know, you can find your school-based mental health staff member because they're gonna have this poster outside. It'll have their picture in here, what their title is, what their name is, and a little bit about their education, the paper, kind of their job, and just a quick fun fact about them to try and kind of make that connection. So a little bit of consistency across the district. Um, we also have a resiliency newsletter that we send out, send out every quarter. And that is just kind of little tidbits on resiliency, on, um, positive mental health. This is for parents. We send it out through the peach jar. So that's quarterly, uh, pre-K through high school. And then lastly, we have our Navigate Suite 360. So similar to the PBIS rewards, we have our resiliency lessons that go through that. So that's something we've been doing for several years now, is making sure that our kindergarten through twelfth-grade students are getting those lessons on just those resiliency standards, on having grit, on being able to, you know, make positive relationships, have positive coping strategies. So we're continuing to, to work with that. And then this data, so increased student resiliency skills, our goal, um, at the end of last school year was sixty percent. Um, our end result was actually sixty-six percent with our new goal being sixty-eight percent. So what that's actually measuring is students' performance on, there's like a pre-post test on those Navigate, uh, Suite 360 resiliency lessons. So this is the percentage of students that passed, um, one of those lessons with an eighty percent or better. So we're looking to just constantly build that, that momentum and their skills in that. So, and I think we will over time. Any questions? Okay, thanks. I think that's the end of us, right?
There's, uh, any questions on any of the objectives that we could answer or?
I don't have a question. Uh, but just a quick comment. Uh, congratulations to Mark and the Priority One team. I mean, you've changed the trajectory of our students in our, in our district just by this. Look at the outcomes that you guys have produced in such a short amount of time. Uh, so congratulations. It's, it's great to hear the updates of Priority One and the strategy. So uh, good job and, uh, things are looking very good. So, great job.
Thank you.
I want to, Jack, I, I gotta make a comment. I, I, Mr. Leclerc, I appreciate those, those comments. And I, I do want to play, pay a compliment to, um, our Department of Learning and our Department of, of School Support. We, we do have a formula for success and that does not include operating in silos. And so as we support our students to work between those two divisions, and what Jack is doing and working with Rebecca and Susan Flores, uh, all working with, with Sheila Brown and, and Matt Kunder, how we're all connected, aligning our resources to accomplishing that, that general goal and mission of student achievement. Uh, it's, it's a fun thing to watch and they're doing an outstanding job. So compliments to the team.
Appreciate each other. Okay, with, with twenty-nine policies, I think there's five minutes in order.
Did you say five minutes? Five minutes?
Yeah.
John, I got a question for you.
Great job. The QR code.
All right, we're back on, so we're gonna start through these couple of small policies we've got today. First, I think we've got 124 ethical conduct. With the doctor?
I'm over here.
Oh, there she is. I turned over the wrong shelf.
That's okay. Yes, the first policy is 0131, one of the board's policies.
Are we gonna, we start with 0124?
131.
Okay. Let me go to that. So this is on legislative policymaking. There were some suggestions by Neola on some different options, but reading the guidance on there, there's still a little wishy-washy on how we should proceed with that since most of that is guidance for other government agencies. So I don't know if there's any particular comments on that before.
I just have one thing, and in a lot of the policies, I noticed that they're changing his/her to their. And there's a spot on page two under E.
I probably missed it.
Yeah, if you just go down to his policy, maybe it's on the next one. Under the superintendent. His/her just changed that to a their.
Got it.
Something that I saw, just for thesis purposes.
Yeah, I agree, I think it says, while it is unclear how these revisions will apply to school boards moving forward, so maybe we keep our language the way.
Very gentle.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm leaning towards. It has this?
All right, and then 0131.7, or point one, I'm sorry, 131.1, is a technical correction in there. Fine with those. Keep our existing, so the first option, if the board choose to make such technical changes, it may be accomplished by resolution as part of the present agenda without going through the normal policy process. Okay, we'll keep that one. Okay. I would like to call Ms. Smith up. We have a few policies for her this morning, so the first one would be 7544. Really, it's just a revision mainly because Twitter is now called X, right? There are a couple of options in there. We didn't make many changes at all.
No.
Any questions about that one?
Nope.
All right, great. Then, next one is 9200, volunteers. There's a statutory reference included in here, and does that need to be updated? If not much else?
No.
Any questions about volunteer?
Just how do we get more of them?
Right. She is working on it, yes, thank you very much. All right, and Dr. Dishardens, I think he wins the prize today for the most policies.
He hasn't been up there long enough.
Right.
He's only had his presence.
We'll start with 2431, interscholastic athletics.
2431, interscholastic athletics. Can I empower Mr. Ham to kind of go over some of these?
I'll be jumping in.
Yep. Yes, so the state has implemented a mandatory requirement for ECGs to be done for all first-time athletes. So students who are gonna be participating next year will have to be screened or be opted out by their family for religious or medical reasons. So we're currently working on putting in a plan in place for that to happen.
We've got available for the kids that can't afford that even less than $50?
Yes, so Dr. D, we're working with a company that actually kind of lobbied for this. Who We Play For is the name of the company, where they do not turn any kid away for financial reasons at all.
We're looking at potentially offering it for $20 in ECG or EKG and working with not just the company, but maybe working with the schools, the booster clubs to kind of making sure, because the first year, it's gonna be ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. It was not staggered in, unfunded mandate not staggered in, so we're looking at all four levels. Eighth graders rising, ninth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, so we'll get there.
Yep.
Pediatricians are already on it, my kids have their physical this year, and they're like, oh, they gotta get there. You know, so they're ready to go for it, locally at least, so it's nice.
All right, no questions on that one? All right, 2431.01 is just a technical change. If there are any questions on that one?
No.
Okay, good. All right, we'll go to 2431.06. That's new policy to us, name, image, and likely likeness in athletics, the NIL.
So NIL, when it first was passed by the FHSAA, the verbiage was that a student athlete could not use school uniform, school property, anything that would brand the school. They could use their image and likeness, of course, and be compensated for that. What this does is update school board approval for students to use. So in other words, if a student wanted to use their uniform, the school board could approve that in their commercial, their advertisement of sorts, but they moved it.
Yeah, we're looking at, if a student wants to use, as Mr. Ham said, their jersey on Port Charlotte High School, let's say their football field, they would need prior written consent from the school district or governing body of the school, if it's a charter school, so we would be, as a school district, weighing in on that. As we checked around the state, seems like this is the way most districts are going. We've, this train's been going down the tracks the last couple of years. We purposely have not touched the Neola policy at the last two rounds, I believe, because things change quickly, and they have changed quickly, so this is a completely new policy the board would be looking at, and as Mr. Ham did say, that it would require prior written consent.
Well, we have nothing in place across the various, so the secondary schools, they're all addressing it the same way if we do that. I would want to make, I would want to make certain that every school's addressing it the same way, and that one school isn't signaling.
It would be.
And handling it differently, so if we choose to do this, and I'm not assuming that we are, but if we choose to do it, I would certainly want something in place so the standard is the same, and as much as possible.
Yep.
To include the charter schools if Babcock gets to the point of athletics. With that, at every extent possible, have it exactly the same across the board.
So in order to do that, then, it says the school, district, or governing body of the school. So should we get rid of the school, and it should just be the district?
I believe so.
So then that way, the schools don't take like.
And who at the district, is it gonna be the superintendent designate near, or is it gonna be the board?
I would, I don't want to speak for the superintendent.
I'm fine with taking that responsibility and putting a team together and making a recommendation to the board if you all would like to have the final.
Right, I would think it would take the, I think the athletic director should be involved in those decisions as a group, and then set us aside so that group can make that decision.
So we want it, I'm hearing you want it to be more explicit.
Yes.
So we don't want it to say the school, the district, or governing body. We want to say the superintendent will make a recommendation to the board, is that what I heard? Designate?
Superintendent or his designate, or the superintendent's designate, I don't want to say his.
But are we gonna have final say, are we gonna vote on each one of these?
I do not believe we want the responsibility for voting on each of these.
Okay, that's what I want to be clear.
So should it say by prior written?
By the superintendent and/or designate.
And no involvement from the board, though?
All right. All right, looks like next would be 2455.
This is dropout prevention and academic intervention programs, and this policy, they just added section headings to make it more readable, and I believe they offered, or we took the option, the definition of what a dropout retrieval program is. Pretty, pretty stinks.
All right, and then, sorry, any questions? 5136 is our wireless communication devices, we are replacing this policy. As you can see, there's a lot of color on this policy.
I will go through the major changes to the policy. And I have to say, what the changes that we're recommending were already put into practice this year. We've, the law, I think, has worked out better than anticipated, and I'll go through that. So, long story short, before the school year started, Mr. Ham got with all the elementary principals, middle school principals, high school principals, and made sure everyone understood what state statute said. And what we're looking at here is policy changes for this policy. All students may use wireless communication devices before and after school, including on school buses. Elementary and middle school students must have their cellphone wireless communication devices, i.e. cellphones, put away during school day. That means from first bell to last bell, K through eight, everyone's on the same page. You walk into Punta Gorda Middle School, you walk into LA Ainger, the first bell rings, nobody has their phone out. The last bell rings, you can take out your phones. Keep it simple type of philosophy, and as well, knock on wood. We talked to, or we had a principal's meeting last week, talked to our principals. They are tickle pink with how well it's going right now, they really are. I don't think we've heard, it's made life easier for the students as well. High school students may use their wireless communication devices during class changes, at breakfast and lunch, and on a school bus during an in-school activity. High school teachers, this is state statute, high school teachers may allow students to use wireless communication devices during instructional time for instructional activities. I'll say it again, during instructional time for instructional activities. The law designates that high school teachers must designate an area for wireless communication devices to be stored during instructional time. Our guidance to the schools is the cellphones stay in their pocket or in their backpack. Let's keep it consistent so we're not hunting for quote-unquote "lost" phones during the day. Schools have the ability to come up and escape wireless communication devices if students are found in violation of this policy, that's nothing new. Students who violate the policy are subject to disciplinary consequences within our Code of Student Conduct, that's already in place. Exception to this policy, with the permission of the school administrator, students may use wireless communication devices in a specifically, as the law says, a specifically designed location. After talking to all the principals, we decided that location would be in the main office area. So we have 20 schools that are using the same location. Where in the main office area, schools can massage that depending on what office is open. So if a student needs to, for some reason, call mom and dad, grandma, grandpa's in the hospital, they just like to check in, they ask permission, and we have a spot for them to do that at, and the principals seem happy with this standardization. That's all I have on, that's a lot of mouthful, but it's the law, because, once again, I think it's been really cool to see kids with their phones not out during the day, talking to one another at lunchtime. That's kind of, that's kind of actually speaking to one another, texting one another.
All right, so we're good on that policy? All right, we'll go to 5223, absences for religious instruction.
Yep, this is verbiage that holds the school district harmless while the student is away from board property if their parents want religious instruction during the school day. This is already encapsulated in the Parent-Sstudent Parent Bill of Rights. There's nothing new, but that's the verbiage that school district has held harmless.
Questions? All right, we'll go to 5500, student conduct and zero tolerance.
Mr. Ham?
Yes, what this does, as we know, state statute, when a student is expelled from school, they're expelled for the current year, remainder of the current year, and the next school year. What this does is it updates the opportunity for the superintendent, if a threat management team proposes to the superintendent to extend that expulsion for another period of time. So basically, the state is giving superintendents of our schools the opportunity to extend based on a threat management case where that student may be a safety concern to the campus.
The more flexibility is better.
Yes. All right, 5530, drug prevention.
Yep, so state passed a mandated fentanyl awareness day, which is August 21st. So with the help of Becky Marizon and Claudette, this year, we work with Drug Free Charlotte County. So every year, we'll promote drug awareness, specifically fentanyl, on August 21st.
Each year, we're looking to expand it in a reasonable fashion, we're even thinking for next school year. At the football games, putting in some, having the schools, their TV production groups, come up with some messaging regarding fentanyl as well. So we baby steps in the pool this year, and we're gonna kind of increase that in a reasonable fashion for the next school year.
I just got a couple of things on the policy. On page two, under B, number three, is that right in front of assists?
Yeah, there's an extra period there.
And then if you go down to I, provide a biennial review, just add the, that's it.
Add the W. Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and for the 5600, student discipline?
Yes, we pretty much already knew this, but state statute gives verbiage to where the authority goes to the teachers and bus drivers to administer or to request discipline processes through their recommendation. In other words, teachers and bus drivers have the ability to recommend the discipline for the behavior, either in the classroom or on the bus. It also adds child study teams, primarily in the elementary, where students are exhibiting excessive behaviors, that we have child teams inside those schools to discuss those students' behaviors and how they can address them at the school site.
We're already doing that.
Yeah, we're already doing all that.
Any questions on that one? 5780, student parent rights?
Yep, I'll take this one, where this adds the verbiage, verbiage for the requirement of the ECG for all high school student athletes that we already talked about in our previous policy that's encapsulated in the student parent rights, and a policy I know we've seen, we've seen multiple times a year. And there is verbiage also being added that allows full-time virtual students, they're allowed to participate in extracurricular activities at the school of their choice, regardless if the school is closed due to capacity reasons. So I think we're at the point now, because I looked at your flow chart from the FHSAA, I think that pretty much, if you're a non-traditional school student, not a brick-and-mortar student, you can pretty much play where you want to play at this point.
This is good to know. So what changed in summary is that if I was at Charlotte High School and I wanted to, or I'm sorry, if I'm at Florida Virtual, or Charlotte Virtual, I'm on a home education platform, and I am zoned to go to Charlotte High School if I were to go to brick-and-mortar, but I wanted to go play at Port Charlotte High, that grade had to be open in the past. In other words, that seat had to be available if I were to go and reassign there. Does that make sense? Okay? Today now, is that it can be closed, it doesn't matter. If I live in Charlotte County and I want to go play for Lemon Bay, but I'm zoned for Charlotte and I'm home ed, go play. So every year, you're gonna see more and more openings of opportunities for students who are in, outside of the brick-and-mortar. So that's a game changer.
Known as the Tim Tebow rule.
Yep.
But if you go to Charlotte High, you gotta play football at Charlotte High.
If I attend, no, I don't, no, I don't have to.
Oh, if you're a student at Charlotte High, you could go play football.
You can, you, so how that would work, if I were a student at Port Charlotte High, okay, and I started to play football there, I can continue to play football at that high school and then reassign and go to school at Charlotte High, but still play football at Port Charlotte.
You can finish the season.
What if you live in Punta Gorda and you've always gone to Charlotte High, but you see that Port Charlotte has a better team, so you want to go?
You can do a reassignment.
If the school's open, yeah.
Yep, if the season, if you have not already started the season at the previous school.
But you would have to, you'd have to reassign to be a student over there.
Correct.
I'm just thinking about how this is all gonna play out, which is now high school sports have become like professional sports, right? And the schools are gonna start recruiting, and the way they're gonna be able to.
Start.
The way they're gonna be able to get around it is, say you live in Punta Gorda, you've always been attending Charlotte High, you're a standout football player, and Port Charlotte wants to recruit you, they could just say, well, just switch over to virtual school, or switch over to homeschool.
You technically can't say that.
We don't recruit in Charlotte, but, but, yeah.
I thought we were just, we do.
You can open up the handbook, the FHSA handbook, and there's, I think, up to 14 different variations of how you can be eligible to play at other schools.
But if you're sitting at a brick-and-mortar, for 99% of them, you have to play for your brick-and-mortar school. One of the exceptions we have, competitive cheerleading at Charlotte High School, that is open to athletes at Lemon Bay and Port Charlotte, because they do not have competitive cheerleading at their school. So they are allowed to go to Charlotte High, try out for the team, every student gets a fair shot. That's a caveat for those.
Well, I notice you can play football wherever you want.
Can you cross count lines with that?
Not through the virtual.
I mean, not really. But if you're like a brick-and-mortar student at Port Charlotte High School, and let's say Venice offers the cross, I don't know if you're not, can you be a student at Port Charlotte High, but then go play the cross at Venice?
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, because we don't offer it.
Okay.
But that's how the bigger districts are getting away, they, kids go to home education, and now you can, because they lobbied for it. So it's definitely, it's a game changer. And that's why the NIL piece is big, because as this continues to grow, so will the NIL opportunities.
Anything on this policy? No? All right. Thank you. 84.
Just trying to figure out. Charlotte High got so good at football.
That was.
Okay, so I did have a couple of questions on 5780. I really didn't have anything to do with that other. But on 5780, if I go to page six, I'm just curious, why were we moving that emergency opioid?
It's the naloxone, because our SRO's carrier.
Yes.
And we, for us to, for us to take that option, we would have to have standing orders and medical oversight for.
Okay, so that's the sheriff's department that does that now?
Yes.
Okay, right, so I understand that. And then, the New World Scholarships on the next page, on page 7E. I didn't think that they offered that anymore.
We went around and around about that last year, you and me, and dug into that. And last year, they still did it, right?
Because this says. I know, Dr. D and I, we went around and around on it.
New World Green Scholarships? Yeah, the scholarships they offer, we don't offer the tutoring program.
No further will be awarded effective 7/1. Right, of this year? Can we double-check that, because I remember I went around and around on that with you last year, and you found something that said it was still there, I thought it was gone too. And maybe it was that it was gonna be gone effective July 1 of this year, which is why we kept it in last year. I can't remember the conversation now.
So this update came out in July, was it July, did you have it? End of June update?
I think I brought it forward last year, and maybe the legislation was that it was going away July 1 of this year. I don't know, I can say.
I'll look into it.
Okay. All right, is that it? Wendy, you said a couple of things, was there one more?
Let me just go through the paper.
I'll definitely check on that.
I think those are the only two that I have questions on. Thank you.
Thank you. 8420, emergency management, preparedness, and agencies.
Mr. Kate?
Good morning. Just a few changes to this policy with new language pertaining to school security requirements, 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after the end of school, which we have supervision 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after in every school. Also, language that outlines the exclusive zone and non-exclusive zones. All of our schools have an exclusive zone, which the Office of Safe Schools is very impressed with, with our perimeter fencing and our interior decorative fencing. They came and trained with us a couple of weeks ago to train their people, so I was able to take them around to three schools, and they love our setup. So we're definitely covered in that area. Language about common areas that act as instructional spaces that must comply with classroom door lock requirements. Their position is if we're using a cafeteria to do testing, we have to treat it as an instructional space. If we're using a media center to do, hold a class, we have to treat it as an instructional space and keep it locked and meet all the other requirements, which we do. And lastly, is the substitute teachers must be provided with safety school protocols and policies. Their hiring process, they're provided our active assailant response plan, that they have to acknowledge everything that they, they acknowledge before they start working. We have evidence that shows that they've seen it. And also, a lot of our schools are now providing the school-specific plans in the subfolder. So when you report to schools of substitute, you have that actual plan for that school. So I think we're doing a good job meeting all those requirements.
Any questions about that? 8452, 50.
Scott McKinney?
This is in response to House Bill 1607 and newly created Florida statute 1003.457, requiring that all schools have a plan for urgent life-saving emergencies. So it just outlines statute, and it also adds that schools must have an operational AED by 2027. Already done?
No, already done.
All right, any questions about the policy? All right, 8462, student abuse abandonment neglects?
Okay, this policy here states that all employees that have contact with children must receive state-developed training on human trafficking awareness. They need to provide documentation that they took that training. It also states employees that who suspect human trafficking of a child must report it to DCF or the Florida Human Trafficking Hotline. The DOE is currently working on the actual online training for human trafficking that, I believe with HR, we're gonna be making sure we comply with that once it comes out. So we're gonna use the state mandated training. I guess there's some verbiage where we can have a little, I think it'd be optional, but we're using what the state is gonna give us on that.
We found that there's one in the vector solutions, but we're waiting to see what the NIL provides. All right, and the last one is 8800, religious and other ceremonies and observances.
The very back, there is verbiage that is gonna be adding a section dedicated to Holocaust Remembrance Day, and talking with the learning department that we are currently in compliance. So I believe January 27th will be Holocaust Remembrance Day, and in our schools, age-appropriate instruction will be provided on that.
Any questions? All right, thank you, thank you all. Mr. Bedford?
You got it. So the New World Scholarship Program was not funded going forward, if you still had an account, you could use it. So any reference to notifying people of that scholarship should be zeroed out, but they weren't in the policy, because I have a policy that has it as well. So we probably just need to go in there and strike it out, because they're not funding it, so.
Is there, is there, if someone was on one, do we have an obligation to continue it? So should it stand there?
So that's on the parents to continue the use of it. If they find that the accounts are inactive, they're gonna close them down to try to recapture the money. They said they didn't fund it primarily because it wasn't being used a lot by parents. So, but no new accounts can be created after the July 1 date.
So should we remove that part from the policy? You're not, you don't always doing it yet?
I think we, I mean, my recommendation would wait till Neola, I'm assuming is gonna come in and do an update and take them all out at the same time.
It's a shame, you know, they have these, what it was is that you got a scholarship and you could have a tutor, basically a reading tutor, and then what I found out was that.
And then what I found out was that the requirement to be a tutor was so onerous. Like we had teachers who wanted to be tutors and in order to do it, they had to like set up an LLC.
Because it was scholarship dollars, they had to create into the system to be able to draw the money from the system. Which is still currently what the scholarship program does as well, so. Some of our teachers have done it, we've collected some data from teachers who are able to tutor based on the, the different scholarship dollars that the state gives. But you do have to be set up in order to do that, to grab that money, so.
We can reach out to Neola and see, I'm assuming they're going to say, we're going to do that comprehensively to all of the policies, but we will reach out to that. Alright, you, you don't have the most.
I know, thank goodness, thank you, thank you, Dr. DNI, I appreciate that.
Dr. DNI are tied though, but we'll start with twelve forty-two, professional learning.
Yeah, so there's three of them together, twelve forty-two, thirty-two forty-two and forty-two forty-two. All basically some title changes, a little bit of different verbiage in them. One of the bigger things that they did is actually made the requirement that we do need to train on instructional materials, but we already do that. And we actually included that in our timeline this year for you when we went over the ELA adoption, so. Anyone have any questions over those?
Alright, and we'll go to twenty-four seventeen, the comprehensive health education.
Right, really adding the fact that CPR, students need to be trained in CPR in both middle and high school. So that is, that is that new requirement. Any questions there?
Who's doing the training on that then?
Uh, it will be done through their PE or health class.
Okay.
We are looking into the machines that we would need to train them in, all of that, so.
And I do have another question on page, on page two.
Yes.
At the top of it, under C, it says grades seven through twelve. And then D, it's six through twelve, and E is six through twelve. Can we, should we change C?
We'll go, we'll check that.
Six through twelve?
I think it's six through twelve.
Well, I don't know though, because maybe that's something that's.
And maybe, we need to look into it, right?
I mean, I don't know that we want sixth graders to be, do we need to be talking to sixth graders about dating violence?
I wish we didn't have to, but I think.
But I think it wouldn't hurt, and the warning signs and all of that, because we're teaching them the benefits of. Social media.
Alright, I'll take a look at that and see if there's any reason why that shouldn't be there with the statute or what the rule says or.
Right, I would prefer that we go according to the statute. So if the statute says that dating violence is to be taught in grade seven.
It says seven through twelve.
But, right, I don't think that I want to go against statute on that. If statute says that that should be taught in grades, starting in grade seven, I prefer to stick with that.
Okay.
There's three statutes here on it, so it shouldn't be hard to find, and we can check that.
I just thought it might have been a mistake, because it was six through twelve, six through twelve.
Maybe, we will check, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Alright, and then twenty-two sixty?
Yes, really, just some language chase, changing. They go from program of in-service training to professional learning and training. That's, that is the majority.
That policy.
That policy, yes.
Alright, and then twenty, oh, any questions on that? Alright, twenty-two eighty was physical education.
Right, so it's the addition of marching band, the two years of marching band that can now count for the PE side. It still does not count for the personal fitness side, so they have to take a class along with that waiver for PE marching band. So they had marching band in for one year, they extended it to two years. So it has a greater meat for the students that do marching band, so.
So did they have to choose between which one they're going to take, that they're going to take the art credit or they're going to take, I mean, they can, they.
No, it says or, so you can either take the credit in PE or performing arts, but not both.
Do you have to choose?
You, you don't have to choose, one, one or the other works, so it's depending on what route you want to go.
Right, so they got.
To meet the need, they have options, they have options there, right, right.
I got a very impassioned video from a young woman last year in marching band. Like actually sent me a video upset that she was not getting credit, that athletes get credit.
The additional credit, right.
Kids pass out in marching band camp.
Oh, yes, yes, they're wearing uniforms, yes.
I love when our students advocate for themselves.
That is great, yes, and, and they listen, which is good, because it should be that way.
It's a T-shirt say of, if ball training was any tougher, they'd call it marching band camp.
Alright.
Any questions over that, other questions?
Alright, fifty-four, ten point oh one, the promotion acceleration placement and retention.
Really just talking about the immediate notification when students are deficient and they're under that ten percent. Uh, in the elementary schools that we find in both reading and/or math. This is the.
They added information about New Worlds.
That's, yes, that's, that's what, yes, they added that, so I'm sure that will be coming off.
And then one last one, we talked about taking things off our schools' plate, that's, you know, that's like one of those kind of things.
Right. Don't have to worry about note, you're going to notify anyway, so it was probably built into the letter anyway, because the notification normally went out in a letter, so we're just taking it off the letter. We definitely don't want to represent that that New World is there, because it's not.
Any questions about that policy? Alright, fifty-four sixty, graduation requirements?
So this is one that you definitely want to understand, that they no longer have a certificate of completion for graduation. So they are still, I believe, working with what their options are going to be. And what we find is it wouldn't normally be affected in the ESE world, because most of the time those students will receive a waiver of the testing. And, and they'll meet it through the grades. We, we don't have many kids in Charlotte County that don't meet graduation because of grades or classes, we have it because of testing. And that was the certificate of completion, it really doesn't change the fact that they can walk across the stage. But they're not getting anything now, so they're not even getting a diploma cover with, with the certificate of completion in it. So, you know, at that point, their, their options become limited, that's why we work so hard to provide testing to the kids. So that they can meet that graduation requirement prior to graduating, so.
I think you have, on page three, under the students with the disabilities.
Okay.
On the third line, it says to graduate from high school with either a standard high school diploma, period.
Oh, the word either probably, okay.
So just take that out.
Yeah, we're going to take the word either out of there, I believe, if I read that correctly, but we'll take a double look at it. Again, just a reminder on the ESE side that students do have the right to stay in school if they defer their graduation option until, or twenty-two, so.
We'll still have a lower graduation ceremony for them every year.
For who?
Yeah, it, it really doesn't change much on the high school side, they will still walk across the stage. They'll still, no one other than the parents and the student would really know that they're not graduating with a standard diploma, because that's how it was with certificate of completions. It's just they won't have any, they won't get a certificate, so. At that point, they have added in that, that we need to offer the ability for them to come back to school for another year, whether they're, you know, assuming they're not an ESE student. Where they can study, take the test, do, do those kinds of things to still reach it.
They can go to CTC through that, it's called the gateway program.
They can do the gate program, normally the gate program is going to be for a dropout though, someone who wants to, to go prior to that end of meeting every, every requirement except for the testing. So we still will test up to a certain age for those students if they want to come back and take those.
How do those students score for graduation appointments?
They count as a non-graduate, they count against us.
They did anyways, right?
They did, certificate completion did too, so it's no different there, it's no different.
Alright, that was it, right?
Oh, we had one, oh, we were doing ninety-eight hundred?
Ninety-eight hundred charter schools.
Just basically, this was just a charter school bill that said that the governing board, you couldn't have members on the governing board if they were land boards or a part of that charter school, so.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and the last few are mine, but luckily they kind of grouped together. So if we can look at zero, one, two, four. And then it's twelve, ten, thirty-two, ten and forty-two, ten, they're going to be the group there. These are revisions to the policy to incorporate, incorporate the Senate Bill three forty-eight regarding stolen ballot. So we're adding that language in to all of those policies to align with that, with the principles of professional conduct.
Has that ever happened in our district?
Not that I am aware of, I know so bad. Yes, yes. Alright.
Usually say politics.
Say such things.
So then the next group is eleven twenty, thirty-one twenty and forty-one twenty, employment. And with these policies, these are going, they're, they're looking at our, or adjusting our dates for, for the ACHA, for the fingerprinting. And the rules that apply to that, plus minimal changes to those. We are using ACHA and it is going well, we're working on our timeline to get out to our schools to start reprinting. But through Field Print, our new employees have all been onboarded through ACHA. So we're working through that, it's a lot of work, but we're working through it and getting all the kinks done. Alright, the next group is eleven twenty-one oh one, thirty-one twenty-one oh one and forty-one twenty-one oh one, and this is the background screening. Again, relating to ACHA and setting some parameters for us to make sure we have a clear and conspicuous link on our website. All of this will be linked back to ACHA, but it doesn't go into place until January of two thousand twenty-six, but we're working on getting all of that in place now. So we're ready when the link is active. Any questions? Alright. And then eighty-four seventy-five, criminal background screenings. Oh, that was connected to those three policies as well, so it's just updating that information. There are some exemptions for non-instructional contractors, which we worked with Jeff on, on those type things, when we have an exemption. Alright, and then student welfare and supervision, you saw this policy the last time. There was an update that we just needed to make to the administrative policy. That came out, we, we were able to do it in the other policies, so we added those. And then the last one? We have the thirty-one thirty, appointment and assignment, transfer and promotion of instructional staff, so it's just some updates there. Again, looking at. The preparation programs and things that we needed to do to make sure it's in alignment with statute. Any questions about that one? Thirty-seven hundred, I believe we already covered the teacher bill of rights with the update, I believe.
Alright, I had an opportunity to view the book put out by Greater. As you can tell, Andy Griffith says retired, because I didn't have any help for less is more. It was herding cats extraordinary.
You know, I get up on this.
So, I, there's, frankly, there's too much there, but I don't feel, if anything that's detrimental to us, it's my humble opinion.
Any questions?
Okay, and I will, tonight we'll go down to the center blessing to the consortium and go from there. We did get the one in, one of them that you asked for in particular, we may, we're able to get through, wasn't as successful with all of the others. Alright, Baker Policy Council.
Yeah.
So we didn't meet last month, but our first meeting after summer is next Wednesday, so.
Alright, this is the March consortium update.
Uh, yes for success, you mean?
Oh, yes.
Yes, okay, so.
Sorry.
Yes for success update. We had our meeting and things are going along very well under Marsha's leadership. The next step is that they will be sending out a survey to the citizens to find out what their priorities are. And then the next step for us, and we should start thinking about it now on a timeline, is we will need to have our resolution for the ballot language. What was discussed in the meeting is that we, we may want to, the last two times we've done it, the ballot language has read the same. We may want to consider, based on what's important to the citizens, changing that ballot language or changing the order of the items. So for example, right now, the first thing it says is that we'll fund safety and security. And remember that our first referendum was done in the aftermath of Bargeary Stoneman Douglas. Our second item was retain highly effective quality teachers and staff, paraphrasing, that was our second item. So I'm going to leave that up to the chair to think about the timeline of when we'll bring that resolution to the board.
Did you say when the survey's going out, or are they still?
Labor Day, right?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's already gone out.
I guess I would suggest that for our October workshop, we put on the agenda to discuss the language in the resolution.
We have, we have results back.
Yes.
I'm not sure how, I saw it, but I'm not sure how long it had to get back.
And my, the conversations that we've had with the supervisor of elections, it's the sooner that we start getting that ballot language together, the better. You know, remember this does have to go in front of the county commission, that they have to, they get a vote, I don't know why they get a vote, but they get a vote on putting this on the ballot.
Yeah, and I think, Bob, you're up next for the next meeting.
And any questions for anybody about anything else on yes for success? You also, that there's going to be a meeting on September twenty-sixth, I think is the date, at the OCS.
But is that going to be the yes for success, or is that going to be with the EDP?
It's actually EDP for both yes for success and the one percent sales tax, presenting those, and John's, John's going to be presenting. Thank you, John.
Chamber, isn't that a joint meeting, EDP and the Chamber?
Yeah.
Chamber will be there as well.
And all the stakeholders.
Alright, and do we need another round of workshops, enough? Alright then, let's get out of this.
Good timing, and I'm sorry, I'll get them this.
Please, Chair Seagull, in this meeting.
Last week, last month? Yep, yeah, we did it early.